But it looks like I'm going to just start the meeting. So, welcome to the March 11th meeting. This is for the Representative Town Meeting informational meeting. We know the meeting has been properly warned.
Indeed, it has.
Very good, thank you. I'm going to start with a couple logistical matters. For those who are just walking in and wondering where childcare is, childcare is located in room 130 down the hall on the left-hand side. Quick segue, Representative Town Meeting will be at BAMs, the middle school this year, and childcare will be provided there as well, which is a really nice location for childcare. So I think that's going to work nicely. Back to tonight's logistics, bathrooms are out the door to the right. There are signs helping you find your way. There's hand sanitizer available on all of the tables. Feel free to find it as you feel that you need it. And finally, we do have interpreters here this evening. They will not appear on the live broadcast. We are live tonight, but tomorrow you can check BCTV's website, BCTV, to view the recording of tonight's meeting, and that will include the interpreters. Okay, so those are my logistical announcements. And at this point in the meeting, we're going to begin with a COVID update, and then we will move into summarization of the articles. Peter, do you want to take over for COVID?
Thank you, Brandy. Good evening. So if you're a human on our planet, you're aware of COVID-19 these days, and we knew that that would be on everyone's mind. We've got a large public gathering here this evening, and another one planned 10 days from now. And so we wanted to take a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting before we get into dealing with the substantive matters that you've come to discuss this evening to let you know what we know, let you know what the town is doing, what we think that individuals can be doing for themselves, and look ahead a little bit to what we can reasonably expect. There's not much that we can predict with certainty. The one great, true thread that's running through this experience for all of us with COVID-19 is uncertainty and how it changes from day to day, depending on circumstances in each region where it's impacting. Fortunately, right now Vermont is an area that is not as significantly impacted as areas around us within the northeastern United States, and certainly elsewhere in the United States and elsewhere in the world. But it's an epidemic. It was declared today a pandemic by the World Health Organization, and as such, it is literally a matter of time before, you know, everywhere is touched by this, and everyone has some degree of vulnerability to it. So the key thing is to learn about it, be aware of it, pay attention to what the health experts in your particular area, our particular area, are saying about it, and do those things that each one of us can do ourselves, make the most intelligent decisions we can for those things that we control in life. What we are doing about that as a town is we've seen this coming for a bit, as it was, you know, once it had arrived in the United States, and there's really good emergency management networks within all levels of government that communicate pretty effectively around these things. And so word was coming out weeks ago that it was time to get ready for the potential impact in communities in the United States. So we've been doing some planning. We now have those plans in place. We've taken the, what in emergency management jargon is pre-incident actions. We don't really have an active incident to manage as an emergency in Brattleboro yet, thank goodness. So we're taking the pre-incident actions that are necessary to make sure that town government is ready, and to the degree that we're interacting with our partners in the community and in the region, that those that we depend upon are also ready to step up into a more active level of emergency response if and when that may become necessary to do. That's almost certainly going to arrive for first responders, and it may arrive more broadly for us as a community, but there's just really no way to predict when or in what ways, you know, how significantly we may be affected by that. But the main thing that you can do right now as an individual is to stay informed through the expert health advice and directives that are coming out of the Vermont Health Department and Vermont State Government more generally through, they've activated the EOC. So the state government has now got a centralized point of communication for all the different departments of state government around this issue to make sure that they're communicating effectively internally among state employees and state agencies. And they're in a position now where they can more efficiently push messages out from the interdisciplinary folks representing the different state agencies there at the EOC to people like us, both those of us in this room who represent your town government and have a role to play in that intergovernmental relationship, as well as us more broadly, all of us as, you know, people in the community who may be affected by this and need to be knowing what the state and others are doing about it. The Health Department is updating its website at least daily, and in some cases more frequently than that. It is filled with really good information and links to the CDC and the World Health Organization and other expert sources of information. You want to go to those sites, please, to learn about what's happening and what you can do and what others are doing around these issues. Please don't rely on Facebook. Please don't rely on neighbors. We'll rely on each other for help, for information about what's going on and, you know, what's currently happening and how it's, you know, moving around and eventually probably into our area. Please rely on the State Department of Health website, and you could call 211 is the other way to access the expert information that is being put out by the state and by other officials. The Health Department website, if you want an easy link to that, if you're somebody who goes to the town's website for information, you can go there, brattleboro.org, and over in the right-hand side under news, where we always have some links to things that are relatively more timely. There's budget information at this time of year, and there's other things there about what is more current events in the community and in-town government. Right now, at the very top of that news list, and it'll stay there until it is, you know, appropriate to remove it, is coronavirus information, which is your link directly to the Vermont Department of Health website. It's going to have all that information. It's going to be updated all the time to tell us what's actually going on these days. The main advice right now, while it's ever-changing, the primary advice is and has been to individuals to rigorously practice good hygiene, both in the hand-washing aspect of that, that I think probably has become completely known by all, I hope by now. We need to be washing our hands, you know, frequently, and we need to be washing them for longer than most of us are used to. I know that there are some medical professionals in the room who are used to washing your hands more completely and for longer periods of time. Some of the advice is to sing the Happy Birthday song twice to yourself as you're washing your hands, and that'll keep you actually moving the soap around long enough. So you want to do that. Make sure that you're keeping your hands clean, that you don't touch your face if you can help it, that you certainly cover any cough or sneeze, preferably with a tissue, and throw that away. If you feel unwell, stay home so that you don't expose other people in the community to whatever it is that's causing you to feel unwell. It might be COVID-19, it might be something else, and we just need to be really careful about not exposing each other to illness these days. And if you can avoid being around other people who are not well, please do that. Obviously, there's a, there's a more complicated question there. We take care of each other. There may be a family member, or a good friend, or a neighbor, or somebody that you're assisting who's not feeling well, and you're going to have to do the best you can to protect yourself as you provide help to them. But in general, in terms of our social interactions with one another, avoid being around people who are not well. That is the basic broad picture of how it's happening right now. The numbers in Vermont actually got better today, but please don't be, take that as a sign that, you know, we're dodging a bullet here. Again, based on the declaration that it's a pandemic and based on how the virus itself is actually mutating and moving around in ways that it's really hard for the medical professionals, public health professionals to predict, you know, nobody is dodging a bullet at this point. We all need to stay vigilant and aware of how it's happening. But it is a fact that today, the numbers of people in Vermont who have been officially declared to have been monitored and tested and not have COVID-19 went up, and the numbers of people who are being actively monitored went down. But that's today's news. That's not an indication that, you know, we're heading in a better direction. Very likely, because we're an area that's been spared so far, there's only one person who has been confirmed as a diagnosed case of COVID-19 in Vermont. They're in the hospital in Bennington. Because of that, you know, there's going to be increased numbers, and we'll be having to stay aware of, you know, where that is within Vermont, where it is in the tri-state area as well. Massachusetts has been harder hit. We're keeping an eye on where that is, and New Hampshire has had cases as well. So probably the unanswered, unanswered question about all this at this moment is, what about Town Meeting? We're here tonight to prepare for Representative Town Meeting. It's 10 days away. Frankly, while it, there are increased numbers of public gatherings of different types, social and cultural events that are being canceled or postponed, for an event of this importance to the community, we're going to do everything we can to hold it on time, but we're not going to be foolish and reckless about that. And so right now, there is not a reason to postpone Representative Town Meeting. If there becomes a reason, either because the state says we're not having any more public gatherings in Vermont, which is possible, then obviously we would follow that guidance and postpone. Or if the state doesn't require us to, but there is some obvious reason and changed, you know, a substantive change in the local circumstances that make that the prudent thing to do, then it may become necessary to do that. But for all different kinds of reasons related to the sort of logistical and legal importance of what you do as Town Meeting representatives, and the one time a year that you come together to do it, and the timeframe within which a postponed meeting would need to be held, which is complicated by the fact that this very well may get worse instead of better. So postponing to have it, you know, think maybe a month from now it's going to be better, there's no reason to have an expectation that that's going to be true. We just don't know what's going to happen. So what we can assure you is, we're monitoring it vigilantly. The Select Board will give consideration to this on Tuesday night to COVID-19 in general, including some discussion of Representative Town Meeting, the regularly scheduled Select Board meeting on Tuesday, the 17th. And our intention at this time is for us all to gather at BAMs at 8:30 in the morning on Saturday, the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay. So we will, in just a moment, move into summarizing the articles. Some of them will be cut and dry, and some of them we will actually provide summary for. I will ask at the end of each article if there are direct questions. I would remind people that any hearty discussion or debate should be saved for Representative Town Meeting, which is a warned meeting where people expect to be able to come to discuss these articles. And I will be gently but firmly ceasing any debate that accidentally tries to happen here this evening. I will, at the very end, have a general Q and A, as well as article-specific Q and A as we move along. Is there, are there any new reps in the room? Raise your hand. Welcome. Woo! Welcome to your vibrant town government that I'm glad we are able to have. Out of you, new reps. Did anybody just barely cauca us in this evening? Nice. Thank you for doing that. That takes courage. Well done. Okay, so at this time, we are going to move directly into our articles, and... Okay, Peter is going to kick us off.
So the first thing that we wanted to speak specifically about tonight is Article 4, the interim treasurer, because while the appointment of a treasurer, or ratification of an appointment of the treasurer, is usually one of the more routine matters to come before Town Meeting, this year, we are in between finance directors. John O'Connor has retired. We are currently recruiting for the new finance director. I'm happy to tell you that we have a good, strong applicant pool. We'll be conducting initial interviews next week, and we hope that by the latter part of the spring, we'll have the new finance director on board. And at that time, as is the practice, you know, the finance director will be the treasurer also for the purposes of meeting all the statutory requirements of having the treasurer by that specific designation. But for right now, we have an interim finance director. We've contracted with an auditing firm from New Hampshire that has experience auditing Vermont municipalities. And so we are having the affairs of the finance department overseen on an interim basis, just as steady as we go through the transitional term. And then the treasurer position, interim treasurer, as appointed by the Select Board, is Debbie DeRozier. You all know from coming and paying your taxes at the treasurer's office on the first floor of the municipal building. She's been the assistant treasurer for very many years. She's been a town employee for 25 years. She's, you know, extremely reliable. She, as the assistant treasurer, has acted as treasurer in John's absence. So she is officially the interim treasurer for now. We're asking you to confirm that with your ratification vote at Representative Town Meeting. And so the wording is a little different on that item as well. Instead of it being for a term of a year, it's for a term of up to one year, because with the appointment of a new finance director, the Select Board will also appoint that person to be the town treasurer.
Are there any questions about what Peter just talked about with our interim treasurer? Okay.
So use of fund balances, the next one we wanted to talk about, that's Article 12. A reminder, and we appreciate the finance committees joining us in this annual reminder, that it's a best practice to use the fund balance for non-recurring expenses. Most typically, and it has become our standard practice in Brattleboro, to be used for a capital investment of one type or another, either into a project or into a piece of equipment. But in the event that it weren't actually spent on something capital, it should always be spent, fund balance, that is, on something other than a recurring operating expense, because otherwise, we're just making it a little easier for the tax load this year with the known additional burden that represents for the year following. So thankfully, we've made a really good standard practice of that over the recent years. This year, the particular detail of it is, we had $223,000 available. We have that policy of, the guideline to set aside 10% of the unassigned fund balance for events that are unforeseen. That came in really handy for Brattleboro during the tropical storm Irene. And so it's important to have that as a sort of emergency fund above and beyond the 10%. When there is an amount in the unassigned fund balance above and beyond the 10%, that's what we look to, to make an investment into some appropriate non-recurring cost. This year, that is a fire engine. There's a 1994 fire engine scheduled to be replaced. It's going to cost about $550,000. So it is in the capital plan for a $550,000 expenditure, and we're asking that you authorize, under Article 12, that $223,000 of that be from the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Peter. Questions or comments on Article 12? And I apologize for not having said this before. If you haven't found it already and you just haven't wanted to ask, we are looking at the warning, which appears on page nine, where you can see the full wording of each motion. Peter and I are kind of using outline language, but if you're looking for the exact wording, you're going to find that on page nine, and you will find descriptions of the articles on following pages. So the next thing that we're going to discuss, or that we're going to overview, yes, you can come right up to the mic in the center and introduce yourself and your district.
Yes, Ralph Mima, District 3. I just had a quick question about Article 12, about the unassigned general fund balance I just wondered if there were any other potential uses for that money, and how the decision was made to use it for the fire engine and not for something else?
The other potential uses are many, probably. The reason that we selected what we selected is because the fire engine is so old and significantly, you know, it is a piece of equipment that is obsolete, needs to be replaced. And we are, as we'll talk about a little later in this meeting, moving now into a period of time when we will have a much more stable means to funding equipment replacement, using the 25-year equipment replacement plan. Won't go deeply into that right now, because we're going to cover that under the budget piece, but because that, this is the last year before we're going to be fully into that process, it seemed a logical place to make this investment in that piece of equipment. As long as it's being spent on something that isn't a recurring operating expense, you know, it could be just as well spent on something else that isn't recurring, but we would then strongly request and recommend that Representative Town Meeting appropriate the full $500,000 from, you know, just general operating revenues in order to build a, $550,000 in order to be able to purchase the fire truck, so.
Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move into Article 13, which, like I said, you can find the formal verbiage on page nine. Last year, Representative, this is the Community Marketing Initiative. And this, if you remember from last year, if you were present, is the Joint DBA and Chamber Initiative for Marketing, Brattleboro. And last year, Representative Town Meeting approved $42,119 towards this initiative, which was meant to be 10% of the prior year's collections of the rooms, meals, and alcohol tax. And that motion was subject to the Select Board's approval of the plan for the marketing and for evaluating impact. This year, as you'll notice, it's in there for $43,748, which is, again, based off the same formula of 10% of the prior year's collections of room, meals, and alcohol tax. There was some projection early on, and we noticed that there was some media coverage of maybe we had approved an increase. It's more that we finally got the final numbers and made adjustments that were correct and true to the numbers that we finally received. And so that is the number that you will see, which is $43,748 for Article 13, the Community Marketing Initiative for the downtown Brattleboro Alliance and the chamber. Any questions? Yes, right up to the microphone in the middle and introduce yourself and state your district.
I'm Millicent Cooley, District 3. I think for, to answer the question, to vote on the question, I think of it in two parts. One is, does one agree with spending that kind of money on this thing, and does one agree with the way that that money is directed in the proposal? So when I looked at this book, I saw that what was listed was the website, and so I went to the website. And because I have experience in hiring groups like that, I was frightened at what I saw on the website. So then I emailed Peter, and I got the proposal, and I had a very, very different impression. So I think, I guess my question is, I would see it as helpful to this group to share the proposal itself, because it's so different, and in my mind, so much better quality than what is represented in the website, which is the link in this thing. So.
Thanks, Millicent. Do you want to speak to that at all, Peter, of the ability for us to link the proposal, or anything you think is good to say?
Yes, we, is there anybody in the room who wouldn't be able to go to the town's website and take a look at that proposal if we posted it there tomorrow? Okay. So if you would want to look at a hard copy rather than at the online version, then you can just contact the town manager's office, and we'll make sure that you get one. But since the vast majority of you would be able to go take a look at the website, we'll just make sure that it gets posted. I think, because it, I'm thinking on my feet here and not sure exactly where we should put it, that's going to be easy for you to find, we're going to make it as easy as possible, put it right beneath that coronavirus link. So it'll just be right on the town's homepage, directly under coronavirus information, and it'll be labeled something like Community Marketing Initiative Proposal, maybe perhaps exactly that. But that, you'll be able to find it there, take a look at it if you want to, to be prepared in that way for that item at Town Meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Yes, in the gray, you come forward and introduce yourself, state your district.
Louise Zach, District 3. Was it true that last year, when we voted on the $42,000, it was assumed that this would be an amount, the 10% of the rooms and meals tax, on a recurring basis? I recall that it was kind of a one-time pilot thing, and maybe I misremembered that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So it was proposed as something new. I think probably whether you anticipate, whether one anticipated it to be recurring or a one-off, may have very well just depended on one's perspective. I don't personally recall explicit discussion of that. There was explicit discussion of what can we expect from this, what will be the measurement of success? And there was an amendment that passed on the floor that attached some conditions. So Representative Town Meeting approved the funding, subject to the Select Board approving the process by which it was going to be implemented, and how success was going to be measured by those who are responsible for the project. And then this year, the request was made to continue the practice of a 10%, using 10% of the prior year's proceeds from the rooms and meals tax for this purpose. So the condition was met, Representative Town Meeting's condition was met, the Select Board viewed an initial proposal, and then a second proposal, did give its blessing to the project moving forward, and now there's, the matter will be freshly before you. Not as a question of whether this is automatically going to happen every year, but whether it would happen this year as a second instance of using 10% of the prior year's proceeds for this purpose.
So in that proposal that's going to be on the town website, will that include the evaluation of the effectiveness and the success of the campaign?
There is information in there. Honestly, I don't have it committed to memory. Kate's.
There is somebody here who could answer that question if you'd like to yield the floor.
Sure.
Kate? Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Kate O'Connor. I'm from District 2, and I'm also the executive director of the Brattleboro Area Chamber of Commerce. We do actually, the campaign was kicked off on January 15th, and we just received on Friday from the local marketing firm that put the proposal together. We have the latest statistics on the digital presence and the print and marketing, and I'm very happy to either, can do both. We can put that on the chamber website, and I'm happy to give it to the town to put on their website. And I think that will answer, hopefully, a lot of the questions that people have.
That's great, Kate. Thank you.
So thank you, Kate, for that. And so just so everybody's clear then about what we'll do, that link from the homepage on the town's website will take you to a page, and on that page, there'll be separate links to the two documents. There'll be a link to the proposal and a link to the document that Kate's going to supply.
Great, thank you. Spoon, and then Alex, and then Wendy.
Spoon Agave, District 3. I'm a little confused at the moment, because I thought we were, we were talking about the request from the chamber and, who else is it? And that's, we didn't have anything like that last year. Last year, we dealt with SEVETS.
No. Yep, this was approved on the floor last year.
Both this and SEVETS.
We did both last year?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Alex Fisher, District 2. I was curious, between the DBA, the chamber, and the town, a lot of the promotion is targeting communities that exist here, but also bringing more specifically queer and trans folks and folks of color to this town through the marketing campaign. And I'm wondering what the town is doing to make sure that it is a safe and welcoming place when folks get here, as it is not already for the folks that are being targeted as tourists, and it's not that for folks that already live here. So I'm curious what is being done to make sure that law enforcement isn't pulling over more folks of color, that there's bathrooms, and like service providers that are treating queer and trans folks appropriately. I'm curious sort of what's being done besides just getting people here, but to actually make it a good experience.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to, don't go away. Because I'm going to go ahead and say that I don't know how complete of an answer it's going to be, I'm going to kick it over to Peter, because I think there are some answers, and I think that is a really valid question that needs to stay on the front of everybody's minds.
So the part of your question that relates to broader community readiness and welcoming this is something I'm not really well-prepared to speak to, because there's certainly other organizations and lots of individual businesses, and all of us individually as people, who need to be... need to be part of making sure that Brattleboro is welcoming for everyone who lives here and moves here and visits here. But I can tell you that town government has taken this matter very seriously for the last three years. You and I have had a fair amount of communication directly around it. We've got a long way to go. I think anybody who's paying attention to becoming a more equitable environment, to creating a more equitable environment for all people present and all people who are coming, knows that the work doesn't ever get finished. We've made, as town government, some particular progress this year in moving from our sort of engagement with folks in the community who have been working around these issues to some beginnings of more concentrated work ourselves. It is just the beginnings, but you will recall, and actually many of the members will recall, because thankfully you voted two years ago to support the creation of a position of Human Resources Director, in part to address these issues, and in larger part to make sure that we just have appropriate human resource practices across all the different operations of town government. So now, we do have Sally on board. She's been here for six months. She's doing a great job, actually more like nine months, doing a great job. And recently, we had training around equity and inclusion, that's baseline training, just to open up our eyes and get ourselves ready to do work together, that included the Select Board and every town employee. And in the months ahead, we'll be working towards actually starting to put actions in place around those issues.
Thank you. And I think maybe more, my question is specifically towards the DBA and the Chamber. I'm very aware of what the town's doing, but because it's a marketing campaign for businesses and for downtown, what is the downtown alliance doing to answer it? So I don't know, Kate, if you want to jump on that, or anyone else?
Kate, you can, if you want to come up.
It's actually a really good question, and it's something that, you know, we put a steering committee together when we were doing the RFP for the proposal for this, and we actually have a small steering committee that stayed on, that is helping us as we roll out the campaign and sort of help us oversee it. And it's something that we talk about at, you know, all of our meetings, is that we're doing a marketing campaign and asking people to come here, and are we going to be welcoming to the people that come here? So it's exactly, we talk about exactly what Alex says. And a lot of what we're trying to do is make sure that the businesses in town know about the campaign. And so if people arrive and they say, oh, we're here because of Love Brattleboro, and they're going to, what are you talking about? You know, so, and this is going to sound really, really small and not what really Alex, I think, you're looking for, but we have, and again, I don't want to sound diminishing what you're saying, but we have window clings, as something as easy as that, that we're trying to get the businesses to put up to say, I understand this campaign is going on, and I am welcoming you, visitor, who is coming for this. So we're trying to, just at a very basic level, do that, but also bring a general awareness to ourselves that we are asking people to come here, and we need to make sure when they get here, they have a good experience. So, and we are doing that with, we have, you know, the discussions are, should we be targeting individual, should we even be doing this for our town? Because we do want people to come here. So from the littlest thing, by having a rainbow window cling in a business, and all the way up to the, really, sort of the higher-level discussions, making sure that we are a welcoming community. I don't know if that's, you know, it's a bigger issue, but that's what we're really trying to do.
Thank you. I'll have Abby come up, and I will say that what I can feel, I'm sorry, Wendy, and then Abby. What I can feel in my gut is that this is a very large topic, and I'm going to expect robust discussion to take place on this at Representative Town Meeting, and I'm going to try and give respectful restraint to it not being a huge topic for tonight, only because it doesn't allow for the conversation for the warned meeting. And so with that, Wendy, I'll have you come right up.
Hi, I'm Wendy Levy, and I'm from District 1. This is more of a procedural question about the article. So as Louise mentioned when she came up, last year, from the floor at Representative Town Meeting, we amended the article to provide Select Board oversight, right? I don't see that reflected in Article 13. So if we want to continue that, does that mean we have to amend that from the floor?
Good question. Peter's gonna take it.
Actually, our expectation is that the motion, so let me say, just as a quick example of how the motion can be more than just what is listed as the essence of the matter on the article. The budget is a really good example of that. So the budget article asks, you know, how much shall we raise and appropriate and expend for the operations of the town? And then there's a motion that is, you know, a couple of paragraphs long, that goes into a lot of detail about how much taxes to raise and different kinds of revenue, and when the taxes are due, and all of that fits into that motion that you ultimately then consider and adopt in one form or another. So our expectation is, based on the action of the body last year, that you'll want to adopt this year, if you do choose to approve this again, the same form of approval that you gave it last year. And so the motion will include the conditions, that it be, again, subject to the Select Board approval.
So we won't have to amend that from the floor?
No, you won't.
Abby?
Abby Manoukian, District 2. I don't want to continue the conversation, but I'll just say that I don't feel like, Kate, you answered Fisher's question, so if we can just get back to that at some point. It's not a matter of marketing Brattleboro so that it feels welcoming to visitors who are coming here, but it's how is that marketing campaign also making people who live here feel welcome, of all persuasions? And it reminds me of the initiative where there is talk of paying people $10,000 to move to Brattleboro, and how is that money, how could we use that money to make people who are here actually stay, as opposed to getting other people to move? And it feels like there's a parallel there. So it's not just like making visitors feel welcome, but making people who live here feel safe and welcome. And those are very different things. So if we could get back to that at the Representative Town Meeting, that would be great. Thank you.
I think that that would be a very wise idea to have, to kind of take stock of this conversation tonight for Representative Town Meeting, and know that those questions are going to come up, probably in threefold, for people who are not even able to be here. Chris, I'll take a question, and then I'm going to probably move us along to our next article.
I don't have a question, but I do have an observation from page 12, which indicates that the steering committee is made up of a number of folks, including Mr. Curtis Reed Jr., who's Executive Director of the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity, and who has a long, broad reputation as a champion of human rights. And I would hope that that would really carry some water on the question.
Thank you, Chris. We'll take that into consideration when formulating discussions for Representative Town Meeting. That's a valid point, and there's definitely other voices that will want to be heard equally as loudly as Curtis's, which is a very respected voice. At this time, I am going to move us on, and we are next going to discuss, no, I'm up again, Article 14, which is specific to the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance. It's the last article that you'll see laid out on page nine, and it is discussing the usual amount of $80,000, which, for those who already know, it's the usual amount. And for those who don't know, that is monies that are collected from only downtown property owners. I believe many people know it as the DID, the Downtown Improvement District. And so this is not money that comes out of town-wide taxes, but rather is something that Downtown Brattleboro property owners participate in, and this is a annual allocation. Are there questions? Peter, do you, did you have anything to add? No? Are there questions? Yes. Now you know the drill, so I'm not gonna.
Louise Zach, District 3. I couldn't find the revenue portion of that $84,000. I would have thought that would have been a pass-through, the $80,000 that they collected, and then we pass that $80,000 out. I may have just not looked at the budget carefully enough, but is it in there?
It is. Let me see if I can point you quickly to it.
Tim just said, as a side remark, that it's in an odd place. So I doubt that it's that you didn't read it thoroughly. It's just one of those things.
On page 114, 114 of the town report, it's the first page of the detailed line item budget, and it's the revenues section. The second cluster of figures there is taxes, and the second line of that is downtown district, and that's the source of the $80,000.
It's helpful, I think, for people, for that to be explained again to people, that that is not money that comes out of taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. That is not sickness. I've been working with hay all day, and I'm really feeling that. Any other questions on the DBA $80,000 annual assessment on the Downtown Improvement District? Okay, so we will move on now to Article 15, which is meet again. Just feel like all of mine are in a row, just throwing that out there. And that is human services monies. And so we have now moved on, of course, to page 10, and it is the large descriptive paragraph right at the top, which is a very distilled reflection of all the very hard work that the Representative Town Meeting Human Services Committee puts in every year to reviewing, I don't know how many, applications and trying to be as fair and as plentiful as possible with supporting our local human services organizations. So as you can see, there is a slight increase. The Select Board supported human services, the Human Services Review Committee's recommendations, and that slight increase is 1.03% of the proposed FY21 general fund budget, which is a total of $190,105. You can see it all broken out to who's kind of getting what, and is there, in this? Good, good, hold on, my fingers are too dry. Oh, good. If you look to page 16, there is a graph that can show you kind of year over year. So you can get an understanding of increases, who's generally gotten funds, who hasn't gotten funds, who isn't currently getting funds, and it gives you a little bit of a window snapshot into this item. Peter, did you want to add anything to that?
Maybe just regarding the 1%. So many of you will remember that there's been some discussion the last couple of years by Representative Town Meeting about whether there ought to be sort of a standard target figure for funding for human services. There's been no decision made by Representative Town Meeting to actually say that it should be 1% or some other amount of the town's budget. But based on the fact that we were already right around 1%, and there had been quite a lot of discussion about that being at least an appropriate starting place for such an annual target, we thought it was important to report that, the results of the committee's work. So somebody from the committee would have to speak to the question of whether or not they viewed it as a goal to bring a recommendation, to have it be 1% of the town's budget. But what we did in preparing the presentation for tonight was, we wanted to make sure that you were aware that, in fact, it slightly exceeds that at 1.03%.
And I think for anybody who's new, and I see your, yep, it's important to, for anybody who's new or just doesn't know, to realize that the Select Board does not sit here and go line by line and say, I don't think this organization deserves money. The Human Services Committee, Review Committee, is a member or is a part of the Representative Town Meeting. Then, after doing so much work of sifting and deciding and using very good algorithms, brings the recommendation to the Select Board, and we pass it on to you, generally in bulk, to be hashed out on the floor or approved as presented, since the hard work was already put in. Liz, let me pass you this. It's already on.
Thank you, Brandy. I just wanted to point out to the Assembly that on page 50 of our booklet, there's several pages that the human service agencies have submitted about each group that would be receiving a grant. And also, the Finance Committee's report discusses the process that the human service agency went through in great detail, and it's a very, very good analysis of their process. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Liz. I'm gonna try not to knock over this water here. Okay, are there questions on Article 15, Human Resources Committee Recommendations? Kurt?
Kurt Dimes, District 2. I would like to ask someone on the committee how far back their perspective was directed to get an idea about our historical contributions to human services. I understand in 1932, the budget was $750,000, or $750,000, and our expenses for the poor house, the farm, and another allotment for the poor totaled almost 7.5% of the town budget.
Thank you for that question. I'll see if there's anybody. I just need to clarify, I believe I said the word resources when I meant to say the word services. That's my bad. I see somebody walking forward, looking like he has all the answers in the world. Please introduce yourself.
Absolutely not, as far as all the answers. John Kennedy, District 1, also a member of the Human Services Subcommittee. What we did is, we reviewed 33 applications. We had an initial meeting with all of the organizations to go over the application before they had the time to submit. So they had about six weeks before the deadline. We developed a matrix that scored everybody on how well they answered the questions in the application. We went down through then, and that gave us a broad view of, of kind of the five members' view of how well those questions answered. We ended up looking at a perfect score of 15, and then grouped the six, seven, and eight scores, the nine, 10, and 11 scores, 13, 14, 15, and worked down from there to come out with numbers. We basically used 1% of the previous year's budget as a guideline. We had no number to work with other than that, and as the numbers showed, we came in within a few percentages and said, well, let's run it up the flag and see who salutes it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for coming up and offering the explanation of the methodology. Millicent? You know the drill now.
Yeah, Millicent Cooley, District 3. I guess I'm, maybe I didn't, I didn't really hear the answer to Kurt's question, and I'm combining that with what Peter said about the fact that Town Meeting hasn't discussed it. So is there going to be some information, is it possible to, at some other time, to look back at that, and is that significant? You know?
I mean, yes. I don't know that we'll look back as far as Kurt's description of 1934, but I think we can see over a five-year trend or something that's a little more feasible.
There's six years' worth of data in that chart on page 16. And just to clarify, the comment that I made was that Representative Town Meeting has discussed this question, but has not taken action on the question of an actual target, a fixed percentage of the budget that ought to be devoted to this purpose. So, and it's actually increased during this six-year period that the history has shown in the book. It has increased from less than 1% up to slightly over 1%.
George?
I just see a hand go up way in the back. George Carville, District 1. There was a lot of discussion last year about the appropriate percentage, and I remember we tried to come up with some things, and some of us got overruled. Could someone, perhaps this is a question for the moderator, is there a mechanism that we could use so that this body could inform the Select Board what percentage we would like them to use? Is there a way we can do that?
Mr. Moderator, you've been interrogated if you choose to be.
Committee of the whole, something?
We could do a committee of the whole, it's committed. It tends to invite a group this large and come somewhere, however, it's.
A committee of the whole, George, would be permitted. It is something that is authorized by the Charter and by Robert's rules, so it's possible. We don't typically
We don't typically, I have no personal recollection of actually doing a committee of the whole with Town Meeting since I've been a member. And the reason is, is it can be somewhat cumbersome and difficult to pull off in a way that is meaningful. But we can do it. It's permitted. The other thing we could do is actually debate this issue as a separate motion under other business, as an advisory directive to the select board based upon what the general sentiments of this body might be. And as you all know, other business is not binding. However, we could have a good, healthy debate, at which point that would be potentially instructive and helpful to accomplish what I think you're looking to accomplish. So, that would be my recommendation is probably the best way to handle it.
Thank you. Did I see a hand go up way in the back over here? Or maybe somebody was just stretching? I just want to make sure I'm not ignoring anybody, because I actually can't see super well over all the heads. Okay. Abby, do I see?
Abby Manoukian, District 2. I noticed that there are five organizations that applied for funding this year that got $0, and I don't see that in previous years where the requests are listed, which is only the last two years. And I'm just curious if this is the first year that's ever happened, if that has happened before and we just haven't seen it. It seems like kind of a high number of organizations to receive $0.
Peter's saying he can speak to that, Abby.
It has definitely happened before. If you want more detail about how it's happened and who was affected, somebody else will have to speak to that. But what, I think what you're seeing in the chart is a record of who has received funding, and because that has changed somewhat from year to year, there are some places where there's blank lines when some, an agency wasn't receiving money, and then other years when they do receive money, some of them have received it every year. The information about who asked and didn't receive money is something that would require digging back into the records of the committee.
It just seems notable that four of those organizations had never asked before, so I would just hope that some amount of feedback were given to them, so that were they to reapply, hopefully that wouldn't happen. Because at least one of them asked for a big chunk of money and got zero, so.
Fair question, and maybe, I think, good to bring back up on, I keep wanting to say Saturday, but two Saturdays from now. Good. Okay. Other questions on human services before we move on to Article 16? Just not my turn. Okay, Peter, it's your turn.
Okay. I'll ask in advance for your indulgence. This is the budget article, so I'll try to move through it quickly, but I also want to make sure that I cover the significant aspects of it. The bottom line of the proposed budget that is recommended by the select board to Representative Town Meeting is an increase of 2.1%. And the property taxes necessary to fund that proposed budget would increase over this year's property taxes by 2.9%. That would be a 3.77 cent increase in the property tax rate. And so, town property taxes per $100,000 of value would increase by $37.70 for the year, or $9.43 per quarter.
Can we direct people to which page they should be on?
Sure.
Sorry, I should have set that up.
Yes, I can do that. One of the things that is...
Yes.
...difficult about responding directly to that reasonable request is there's a 20-page line item budget that I don't think is the place you want to be looking at while I'm speaking. I don't think that's going to be helpful to you, although we're happy to look at any line item and answer any question that you might have about that level of detail. It might be helpful to look at pages 112 and 113, which is two pages at a glance that provide a more detailed summary than the couple of tables that I've included in the budget message. But I would suggest, I guess I'm going to quote the finance committee here, because it's a little awkward for me to recommend my own document to you. But we work hard to make sure that the budget message that comes along with this document, with these numbers, explains where the priorities are and what the decision context was for the expenditure of $18.5 million that we're proposing. And so, I think it is, as the finance committee thankfully pointed out to the membership, useful to read that. It's only about seven or eight pages' worth of explanation, but it'll go a little deeper than what I'm going to cover here in this brief presentation tonight, and hopefully it'll be helpful to the members in formulating your own opinion about whether the proposed budget is reasonable, or whether there's things you'd like to change about it. But for tonight, as I go through the highlights, it might be useful to you to kind of keep an eye on pages 112 and 113 as the sort of middle ground between very, very big-picture summary and the line item detail. The, I'll move on from the summarizing, as I did, the overall increase, so that I talk now about the particular causes of that increase. What are the major items that are driving a 2.1% overall increase? And this year, the really overriding theme of the budget that's proposed is the major investment that we have made in town employees and the continuing cost of that in the upcoming budget. So, this past year was a year when, 2019, all four of the collective bargaining agreements expired with the unionized employees. Most of the town employees belong to one of those four unions. There's about 25 or 30 employees that are non-union employees. That's mostly the management team and part-time employees and just a couple of other positions. So, we have new agreements, new three-year agreements with each of the different unions, and there are included within those agreements some continued work that we began three years ago in the cycle, the 2016 cycle of collective bargaining agreements, to make sure that we were paying attention not just to cost of living, but to the actual structure of our pay system and making sure that in areas where it was not equitable across the full town organization, that we have made adjustments in how we pay people in addition to how much we pay people. And so, that had some impact over the last couple of budgets from that 2016 set of agreements. It has a more substantial impact this particular year, where the overall recommended increase in employee salaries from FY20 to FY21 is an increase of 5.9%. Part of that is because we created a new position, so it is a larger-than-normal increase because we don't very often create a new position. But this year, at the direction of, well, not quite the direction of Representative Town Meeting, at the recommendation of Representative Town Meeting to the select board, and then the select board's very thorough consideration of it during the summer months, in August, we created the position of Sustainability Coordinator. And so, that salary and the benefits for that position and the other costs related to that position are all reflected in the proposed FY21 budget. There was the $100,000 flat amount of money that was a sustainability-related language, but not in the salaries part of the budget, because it wasn't a position. So, it was the standard $10,000 for sustainability that had been in for many years at that level. Representative Town Meeting last year directed that that be increased to $100,000 with the intent of hiring a, creating a position and hiring a Sustainability Coordinator. So, that got approved by the select board. We have done that, and now that money, instead of appearing over in the non-personnel expenses, is in the staffing costs of the town. That's one part of the 5.9% increase, and then the remainder is, we would have, even without that factor, have had a larger-than, sort of a normal average year in terms of compensation increases for town employees because of the structural work that we're doing in the implementation of the new round of collective bargaining agreements. And then, the additional impact of looking at the non-union employees. We had not done that for the non-union employees at all, at least during the five years that I've been with the town, and we had done some really intentional work around the collective bargaining agreements. And so, it became apparent last spring, as we were going through finalizing this new wave of the collective bargaining agreements, we really needed, out of fairness and running a good operation, to see, you know, what the situation was for the non-union employees and take action there also to ensure equity across all town positions. We believe we've done that, and no system is perfect, but we think that we've calibrated the town's pay system now to really, fully defensible to a sort of, you know, magnifying glass kind of review. I'd be happy to sit down with anybody who has any continuing concerns around what you see in town compensation, because we've gone from some parts of the system that were really just being carried forward from, you know, some very old decisions year after year, and others that were sort of very isolated issues that were addressed to solve a very isolated problem, to taking a much more comprehensive approach and making sure that we can look each employee in the eye and say, "We believe we're paying everyone fairly." So, the impact of that is that there are some positions that have received more than just a cost-of-living increase. We've got full documentation of what that looks like in the collective bargaining agreements and in the materials that the select board approved for the non-union employee changes. But the impact to this budget, just to carry on and implement those changes, will be a 5.9% increase in salaries. There's also a 3.4% increase in employee benefits. That's actually smaller than a typical increase for those costs, primarily because health insurance is such a large expense. And so, this year, we do have, in the, just the health insurance premiums, there is an increase of approximately 10%. And what we did was, we worked hard in other areas of the health insurance program and related benefits to make sure that we didn't have more money there than we needed. There's an element of this that we talked about very extensively a few years back. I won't go into it tonight except to mention it. The health reimbursement arrangement portion, the HRA, which is a self-insured layer of the health insurance program, that's not a fixed number. That's a number where we need to make a judgment call about what's a prudent amount of money to set aside, because there's some risk that the town is taking. We're going to be paying claims that are unknowable, that are going to occur between six months from now and 18 months from now. But we've got several years of the HRA experience of administrating the HRA now, so we've got a really pretty good handle on, you know, what an, sort of an average year with a factor to give us some protection for when there's a heavy claims year looks like. And we found that we, over the last few years, had been budgeting more for the HRA than we really need to have there. And so, this is a year when the HRA line item is coming down. There's a few other adjustments like that within the area of, you know, the broader definition of employee benefits, so that the overall impact, even though the one single highest expense there is the health insurance premium, and that's going up quite a lot, the overall increase is $112,000, or 3.4% of the cost of employee benefits. Department expenses are also up by greater than a normal amount, but for three really clear reasons. So, that increase is 6.1% over the prior year, or $117,015. But the main reason why is additional costs that are related to our obligation to comply with state stormwater mandates. So, there's acts of the legislature that were adopted in order for Vermont as a whole to comply with federal regulations that we're not currently in compliance with, EPA water quality standards that are particularly a problem up in the Lake Champlain part of the state, but there also are some issues related to the Connecticut River that are part of that set of issues between Vermont and EPA. And so, the state legislature's action imposed uniformly across all the municipalities of the state obligations that are substantially increasing our costs for stormwater management. In the current, in the upcoming year, in the budget that you'll be considering 10 days from now, the funding above and beyond last year is $60,000 of additional funding. It's gone from about $25,000 to about $85,000 in this one year. And we know, this is basically planning money. There is some implementation work going on here, but it's sort of early and low-hanging fruit kind of implementation. There's planning going on that's going to lead to far more significant expenses in the future, and it's all going to be an obligation that we, as a community, will have to step up to in order to meet the state requirements under the new act. So, related to that, not before you, for the consideration of this article or any aspect of the Representative Town Meeting this year, but something that staff will be working on and developing together with the select board in the months ahead, we plan to create a stormwater utility. And the reason for that is it'll function as an enterprise fund like the Water and Sewer Utility and like the Parking Fund. That has advantages and disadvantages when you look at it just as, you know, is that a good idea or not? It isolates those expenses in a way that will be very easy to see, but you wouldn't necessarily do it, except for the reason I'm about to offer, which is the state of Vermont will need to pay its fair share into the stormwater utility as a payer of fees for one who owns and operates and maintains large, impervious area in Brattleboro. And the state of Vermont doesn't pay taxes. So, since these costs are going to go up very significantly, and we can't prevent that, we can manage it and be wise about it, but it's going to increase, we want to make sure that that doesn't just automatically bring an additional tax burden for Brattleboro taxpayers with it. Instead, we'll create a more sophisticated fee structure. There are examples already in Vermont, up in the Lake Champlain area primarily, where communities are already creating these. So, we'll work to create a structure where an owner that has a lot of impervious area pays a high fee, and an owner that has a little bit of impervious area pays a little fee. Typically, residences get standardized, they get homogenized, because residences don't typically have a lot of impervious area, and so, in the creation of these models for these fee structures, usually there's a relatively small annual fee that's paid by residential owners, and then there's a more complicated formula that determines what commercial owners pay. The state of Vermont will be paying a very substantial fee, because we're an interstate highway town. So, I-91 running through Brattleboro will significantly impact the state's share of expenses into this stormwater utility. So, beyond the $60,000, there's two other reasons why the non-personnel department operating expenses are increasing by more than usual. One is the creation of a new funding line item this year for Project Care. That's a social community outreach, social service partnership that the police department operates together with Turning Point and Groundworks and others in the community, and it has been unfunded up until now. It's been done with volunteer labor and time that the town commits to it out of our, you know, already funded personnel. We will be continuing to make in-kind contribution to the police department's role in this. The $16,000 will provide some funding to pay for the volunteers who participate, who have been volunteers and will now be paid, participants in the program who actually provide coaching services to the folks who are recovering, the recovery coaches who assist folks who are entering into recovery services, and for transportation services to make sure that people who are in a medical treatment to help them get off of an addictive, addiction to a legal drug, get the transportation that they need to stay on that program and get healthier. So, the select board is recommending $16,000 of funding for those purposes for Project Care. And there's an $8,000 increase in the elections line item, simply because of the increased cost of both the Representative Town Meeting-related costs and the operating of the elections themselves, the actual balloting processes. So, those three things together make up well over half, something more like 70 or 80% of the, of the overall increase in that area. The one final increase that I want to mention that is greater than normal also relates to something that the finance, the committee has recommended be addressed, and we, town staff agree, and will be bringing forward to the select board next year for consideration, a way to address this and what we think is going to be a, just a more proper way to go forward, is the transfer to solid waste. So, it's not a new issue for you to hear from us that the transfer to solid waste is going up, and that the reason it's going up primarily is because we do better and better and better at diverting garbage out of the garbage waste stream and into the recycling and compost waste stream. That's a great success, but it means that we're selling fewer yellow and purple bags, and the bag revenue is what is the primary source of non-tax revenue for the solid waste program. Basically, when the law got passed that said you had to have variable-rate pricing that would discourage people from throwing away garbage and encourage the recycling and reuse, the calibration of that was appropriate to the amount of garbage that was being thrown away at that time. But because the program has been successful, there's less revenue for the program, and each year, we've had to have pretty substantial increases in the amount of taxes that subsidize... amount of taxes that subsidize the operation. So, the recommendation from the finance committee, which we think is a good one, is to just incorporate solid waste into the general fund. It used to be there. It got broken out to be an isolated set of revenues and expenses as part of the compliance with the state's law regarding variable rate pricing. That's really not serving any useful purpose to anyone in our community or outside it at this point. We know we're in compliance with the state law, and we are an example that others are trying to follow in terms of the compost element and other ways in which we've been really successful with this as a community. So, from a funding point of view, what we ought to do is show it as what it is, which is an expense of the general fund, where it is, there is some revenue to the general fund that comes in as a result of the bag sales, but it's carried heavily by the property taxes or general revenues.
Hi, I'm Andy Davis from District 3. I was trying to find in the revenue side what the income from bags is, and I'm just curious, that number.
Yep.
And I'm also curious, I know trash is complicated, we've spent a lot of time on it over the years, but the component of taking trash, that part, that section of the waste is being driven to Coventry, virtually driven to Canada.
Yes.
And I'm curious, is it possible to compare what people are paying for those bags with the actual cost of that component of disposal?
So, we will look into this and provide some supplemental information. I don't have right at hand certainly that very precise piece of this. It is a little more complicated than just driving to Coventry. There's actually multiple places where Triple T can and does take the garbage, and they make that decision. That's not a decision that's controlled by the town. But the, we do know what component of the overall contractual relationship we have with them is for the transportation of the garbage, or at least for the combined cost of transportation and disposal of the garbage. So, we'll provide a breakout of that. I don't have that with me tonight.
And the revenue.
And the revenue side, from the bags as well. That's actually, in its current form, a budget that the select board will be looking at in April and May. It's a very small little budget, it's got four or five items of revenue and four or five items of expense, but we'll grab what we have on that, the most recent data that's responsive to your request, and we'll make sure that everybody has that for a week from Saturday. Sure.
Melissa Cooley, District 3. This is a question I asked in the caucus room, but I wanted to ask it here while Peter's here. Page 138, there's a pie chart, page title, "Select Boards Recommended Fiscal Year '21 General Fund Budget Expenditures By Type." There's a, at about nine o'clock, and this is a piece of pie that is for debt and debt service, and it's 7% of the budget for a million, two plus. And, you know, I'm just, I'm inexperienced completely with debt, well, how towns handle debt, what's normal, how, and what's the plan for this? What's the vision for, I mean, because, you know, we're going to be debating other articles about like $43,000 for marketing. This is like, this is like three fire trucks.
Yep. Thank you for the question. This is an area we've done a lot of work on, and it's an area that is decreasing substantially. I haven't quite finished with the presentation. I was about to highlight some things that, I've gone over all the things that are increasing by more than a normal amount, and I'm happy to share with you some good news about areas where work that we've been doing over a period of years is paying off, particularly in the area of workers' compensation and debt management. So, if I may, I'll address that as we get through. It's actually, your question is very well taken. You want to be careful not to take on too much debt, and there's very specific ways in which we have reduced the town's use of debt that is beginning to pay dividends for us. We'll get to that in a second. So, moving on from, oh, I have another question. Robin?
Sorry, I just had one question about the trash bags. Did I understand you to say that the price of the bags is probably going to increase to accommodate that people aren't buying as many?
No, I'm sorry if I left people with that impression. The bags prices are not intended to be changed. The subsidy from the general fund has grown larger and larger, in large part because of what we have discussed about how well we've diverted so much material, and also because of the volatility in the world's recycling markets. So, the compost is an unmitigated success. It's wonderful. The recycling is a more double-edged sword. We are recycling a lot of material that's not going into the landfills, but it's become substantially more expensive to do that.
Okay.
And so, there's an increased cost to this operation for that.
The fund burden is increasing, but the bags will stay the same.
The bag price for individuals who go out and buy a bag is going to stay the same.
Okay.
Yep. So, moving on from, oh, I'm sorry, again.
Peter Valley in District 3. I wonder if part of the presentation, Peter, on Saturday could get at the figure of what we're saving in transport costs of that trash, which is now being recycled, but heretofore, you know, we had a large expense in carrying those things that we're now recycling. Is that figure available?
We'll try to give you something responsive to that. It's honestly likely to be an estimate at best, and we might beg off on it and tell you that we did, in order to not just be throwing something on the wall.
Sure.
I'm not sure how precise we're going to be able to be, and I can tell you, it will not relate to the diversion of the recycled goods because of how expensive that has been and how volatile that is out in the markets where the recyclers sell the goods. So, that cost has increased, the tipping fee cost for recycling has gone very high. Where we do have a great success, and we can quantify it for you, is in the increased volume of compost that stays right here locally. That gets processed at Ferry Road, and it's, you know, there's a cost savings and a sustainability aspect to that that's terrific.
And that's part of the revenue stream. I mean.
That certainly is material that seven or eight years ago was part of the garbage.
Exactly. Thank you.
Sure. Is there any other question about what we've covered so far, or are we ready to move on to other aspects of the budget? Okay, great. So, I want to move now into one thing that is not going down, but the very fact that it's staying level is really good news and an important reflection of work that we've done concentrating on something we know, we knew was a problem in operation of town government, and that's our risk management funding at $845,000. It was that last year, and it will be that again, or it is in the current year's budget, and it will be again for FY '21. And the reason why, a major component there, this does have also the property and liability coverage in it, but the most significant cost in this group of expenses is the cost for the workers' compensation insurance. And we recognized when we did the comprehensive review of town operations several years ago that, you know, when we were identifying areas that really needed attention in town government because they were either, you know, operationally deficient in some manner or an opportunity that we needed to seize, or in some cases like this one, a cost that was out of control, we identified things that just needed that more intentional effort to improve. In workers' comp, what that led to was a better procedure for how we handle claims and help employees get back to work sooner. Won't go take the deep dive that we've done with you sometimes in the past around workers' comp. I'd be happy to do that if somebody has a question about it. But for tonight, let me summarize by saying that it's good for the employee, and it's good for the organization, and it saves society money in addition to saving the town's taxpayers' money when folks are getting back to work after an injury quicker. And we've created ways in which we help that, help ensure that that happens by working together with the employees and with the medical treatment, the folks giving the medical treatment to them. In addition to that, there's been some really concentrated work on safety and just better practices among town employees to have fewer claims in the first instance. We've had some ups and downs with that. Some of that is controllable, and some of that is circumstantial, but the combination of the intentional work to be, maintain a safer workplace, and the significant improvement we've made in claims management, has taken a cost that was, you know, going up by double digits, out of control, and together with a softer market. This is a year when workers' comp isn't increasing as rapidly as it has been in some years past. But a very significant part of the level funding this year is because our rating comparing the town's experience to other employers who provide similar services is now better than average. So, where we were running, they call it an experience modification, we were running at some years at 1.25 and higher, where 1.0 is average. This year, we were at 0.96, and the first time we've been below, we've been below 1.0 for a while. So, town staff has done a tremendous job to actually, you know, pay attention to this need and get this cost under control, and it's reflected in this year being a level-funded risk management budget. The capital transfer is slightly reduced. I want to tell you that that's not so much strategic as it is circumstantial. The, we have created a practice, we together have, you voted to support recommendations to increase the amount of cash from the annual revenues that we're putting into capital investment over these last several years. We got that up to $1 million last year. We're proposing again this year that it be funded at $1 million of real-time revenues. So, the difference between last year and this year is that the FY '18 budget ended with a slightly larger surplus than the operating surplus than the FY '19 budget did. So, we had almost $300,000 available of excess fund balance to put into capital last year, and we had $233,000 of it this year, but, or $223,000, the number that we talked about earlier. But, so, there's a slight decrease there, but it's because of the money that was available to invest in the capital needs of the town. Our intent in future years is, as we can, as opportunities arise, when we don't have other expenses that are increasing in particular years, to seize again the opportunity to push that $1 million a year into something a little higher. We think that, you know, $1,300,000, maybe $1,500,000 would be a more prudent level of expenditure to keep up with the aging infrastructure that we have in the community to make sure that we're addressing the capital needs fully. But it's an achievement that we've come up from about $300,000 five years ago to $1 million now in holding and using, you know, the good practice of using this fund balance as an additional contribution to capital when we have that opportunity to do that. So, this year, the main point here is, that's how the funding of capital works, and the emphasis of capital this year is to fund, for the first time, the implementation of that 25-year capital equipment replacement plan. So, we're going to be levelizing by funding the budget in the manner, the transfer to capital in the manner that it's recommended, we're going to now be levelizing the annual commitment to capital equipment replacement. It'll go up a little bit, you know, over time. There'll be years when it stays flat. There'll be years when it goes up by, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 or $12,000, but it'll never again go up by, you know, $400,000 and then down by, you know, $200,000, and then back up by $500,000, which is something that we've been coping with in the past. And that goes squarely to the management of debt, because when there's those kinds of cycles happening, and you've got vehicles that are failing and just absolutely have to be replaced, especially when they're, you know, $300,000 or $500,000 large vehicles, we get ourselves in a situation where we need to borrow money to replace operating rolling stock. It's still a capital investment. These are vehicles, especially the larger ones, that are going to last a long time. But to borrow money and pay interest, usually on a five-year note was typically how it was done here and how it's done in many places, we're paying interest for the borrowing of that money in order to buy a vehicle that, we're going to buy it again when this one wears out. If we have a plan, as we do now, for, you know, being, seeing those things coming, where, you know, a fire truck is going to last 20 years, and a dump truck's going to last 10, and a pickup truck's going to last seven, those kinds of things, a police cruiser lasts four. And when we see those cycles and can plan for those expenses and then levelize that over the long haul, we avoid the spikes that would either cause a significant tax increase or the necessity of borrowing. And so, instead, what we'll do is, part of that leveling process is managing well the timing of the replacement of vehicles, so we get, you know, sort of as much value out of them as we can, but we don't run them until they die. And then, part of it also is, for those very large items, pre-funding some. So, in the fire trucks, there's a whole plan that's part of it that we went over last year that is, and again, I'd be happy to sit with anybody and go over the details of this, but where we're actually setting aside a certain amount of money each year because, over the course of time, when you've got three or four years in a row of buying fire trucks, that's just money that can't then be invested in any of the other capital needs of the town unless you've set some money aside for that. So, we'll have a fire truck fund that we set some money aside in, and we'll also, with some of the larger pieces of equipment, set money aside over two years or maybe three years, and then buy it in the second or the third year. So, those, the sinking funds, the fact that we're going to be setting aside some money as part of this levelizing to be ready to make the larger purchases, means we're going to be earning interest on that money that, in the past, we've been paying interest on as debt. So, all the way around for all those reasons, we think that this year is a particularly important year, please, to approve the capital transfer part of this budget in the manner that it's proposed, because it's the year that gets us into that levelized program.
Melissa Cooley, District 3. Thank you very much for that. Are you saying that by having this transfer process, transfer fund approach with vehicles, because those are the examples you're giving, that we are heading towards a time in the next three to six years where we're not going to be running debt?
No, no, we won't get to where we're not running debt. What we'll get to is, we won't be borrowing. We already haven't been borrowing for vehicles. So, we did, used to borrow for vehicles. This year, debt service is going down because a previous borrowing for vehicles, the final time we did it, is now going off the books. So, we won't, we aren't borrowing anymore for vehicles, so that part of debt service is just gone. It's not down, it's gone. But we still have debt service that we need to pay for the investments that we make in our facilities, and we've got more of that coming. We've got old facilities that need attention. So, we talked extensively during the budget process with the select board this year. There isn't any particular proposal before representative town meeting this year, but we will be before you probably next year, certainly within the next two, to be talking about capital investment that needs to be made to facilities at Memorial Park and to facilities at the Public Works operation. And so, that's going to be beyond the scope of what we can fund through an operating budget. We will need to borrow funds. We'll have lots of good detailed information in front of you, not only about the projects that we're proposing, once they take shape. There is some planning, actually, in the capital budget this year, there's some planning money related to the Memorial Park pieces. You funded last year the planning money we needed related to the Public Works piece. But the, when we come back and have actually a proposed bond and program for making those improvements, we'll not only be specific with you about the work to be done, but also about the impact that has on our level of debt in relationship to, not only our operating budget, which is one measure of managing that debt properly, but also to our property tax base.
So, do you have a point of view about where that debt, oh, a general, like, you know, where should we be aiming for on much debt?
No, it's not really quite that clean and clear. It depends on a lot of context. Like, we'll have that conversation a year from now about the context, and in the run-up as we get to there, I will say, it is, it is in a period of time when it is lowering, we will ask you to allow it to go back up for these other facility needs, but the community made a very big investment four years ago. There was a decision to support the police-fire project. And so, that, the first year of any borrowing like that is always the most expensive year, so that cost is coming down. All the prior borrowing for other facilities' needs is coming down. We are in a better position than we have been, but we're going to need to borrow some more and make a new investment in those other facilities I've described. And what, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I'll point that out in a second. One of the reasons why it's so important to get on levelized funding for the equipment replacement is so that we can focus in a less complicated manner on the facility's needs, so that as we're determining how much we need to invest and what it's going to cost us to do that, it's not muddied up with, this is a year when we're doing $1 million worth of vehicle purchases, instead of a year when we're doing $300,000 worth of vehicle purchases. We need to keep that piece stable because we can, and it's smart to, and we avoid debt. And then, it helps us also isolate more transparently the cost of maintaining the facilities in proper order.
Thank you, Peter.
Sure. Couple of final highlights, if it's... Couple of final highlights, if it's okay to do that. So on the revenue side, I just want to point out that the rooms and meals taxes have increased again, not quite as dramatically as they did over the prior few years, but the increase last year was about $20,000, so we have brought that over into the expected level of collection for the coming year. A $20,000 increase in that line item is about 4.8%. And the initial news on the local option sales tax is very good. We had estimated $630,000 of revenue to be collected over the course of the whole year. In the first two quarters of receipts, we've actually collected over $400,000. We're still being cautious. Our budget figure for that item in this proposed budget is $630,000 again, because the first two quarters were great. We don't think that we have enough experience with that source of revenue to make a bet on it staying up at that level. If we get a whole year of that and we see it continuing into next year, the next year we'll be talking about being able to take advantage of the extra value that that provides to us of collecting more revenue from that source than we had expected to. But that piece is paying dividends. I'm done. Finally, finally.
Good job. All right. Okay, we'll take two questions, and then we do need to move on. George and then Chris.
George Carville, District One. Last year, we approved $100,000 for sustainability, which included hiring our new sustainability coordinator.
Right.
He didn't start until well into the year, so we voted $100,000. What happened to it and what's left?
Sure. So we've run an estimate on what we know we will have expended by June 30th, because Stephen Dotson, who is our sustainability coordinator, started with the town on February 3rd. That's five months of the fiscal year that we'll be paying salary and benefits for him, as opposed to the full 12 months that was the intention of the funding. And so the cost for the position, as well as the related expenses around the creation of the position and the equipping of the position, are about $35,000. $35,000, $36,000 is what we expect to have incurred by June 30th for that. And there will be additional expenses that are sustainability-related that are going to be coming before the select board between now and June 30th. It's going to be hard. It is hard for me, as I sit here tonight, to tell you exactly what that might look like. There's a couple of specific things that are being analyzed right now, and there's the potential that other good ideas might come along to draw also on the sort of balance of that. What we'll want to be careful about is just the same conversation that we have about use of fund balance or recurring expenses. Why we use fund balance for non-recurring expenses is, so in this situation, the investment of the balance that's available because of the fact that the position wasn't filled the whole year, we'll want to make sure is not in something that we expect to do again next year, because next year we're going to pay 12 months of salary and 12 months of benefits and 12 months of operating costs related to the position. We, in this budget, did apply the direction that we thought we had received. The combination of your decision to fund that function at $100,000 instead of at $10,000, and the select board's decision to invest the lion's share of that in the creation of the position, is reflected in the budget that's before you, because there'll be about $90,000 worth of, not just compensation, but compensation and other expenses related to the position existing and functioning within town government, and about $10,000. There is a $10,000 line item. In order to reflect the $100,000 commitment that you had approved, there's a $10,000 line item now within the planning services department, because that's where the position sustainability coordinator resides. That's where the salary is reflected. So there's also a $10,000 line item in the non-personnel expenses of personnel services for activities and outreach and sustainability-related expenses.
I just wanted to say how grateful I am, as a taxpayer, for this tremendous initiative you've taken to conquer the volatility in the capital budget. I really think you need a standing ovation. I thank you very, very much.
Great work.
It's a team effort, and it's been a long haul, and it has required not just the work of the senior staff, but the support of the select board and representative town meeting. So thank you.
Okay, so let's do a time check, because I already forgot my last time check. 8:42. All right, so we are moving on now to Article 17, which is conveniently located on Page 17 and 18. This is SEV Ed's Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Services? Strategies? I almost nailed it. So there is a pretty brief summary on this article on Page 17 and 18. I'm going to go over our bullet points. If you want more in-depth analysis questions, on Page 18, in the last paragraph, you can see that Adam Grenold invites your comments and questions to him, and that's his extension listed here. And also, on Page 55 of your packet, is their full narrative, so you can get more information from there. For what information we will be giving tonight, it is called Article 17 for SEV Ed's. The request this year was for $3 per person for the town of Brattleboro. The select board has put that through at that amount to the reps, you all. That is a total of $36,147. This comes out of program income, which originates as federal funding via state of Vermont to Brattleboro. So we are kind of the end of that pass-through. Program income can only be used for economic development or for housing. So that's a very specific pot of money that comes from the feds to the state and lands in Brattleboro, and that is where this request is coming out of. The request goes to all towns that SEV Ed serves. You'll see that in their summary, and with the detailed report being on Page 55, and Adam Grenold's contact information being on Page 18 for more in-depth defense of why they feel they have earned that $3 per person. It would be weird for us to give that defense for them, basically. So you should reach out to them, read your materials for that, and talk to your fellow reps, but not by replying all to emails, please. Okay. General questions on this item, outside of what I just covered, for reading and question directing purposes? Good, okay. I'm up again with Article 18, which is not on Page 18, it is on Page 19, right? Is it on Page 19? No, that is not correct. You know what? It doesn't have its own thing. So for those who are veterans, you're going to recognize this. For those who are newbies, just kind of bear with me for a moment. So this is the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District. This is required to pay bonds that funded previously, water and sewer improvements that were needed at Mountain Home Park. It was paid by Tri-Park to creditors, because the town is the borrower. The amount is $223,276.47 for fiscal year 21, and this amount varies slightly from year to year. If anybody has questions on that, I'm going to direct them to Peter, because I myself, it took me a little while when I was a newer rep to kind of wrap my brain around it. Does anybody have questions? Yes. Come on up, Gary, and introduce yourself.
Yeah, Gary Shroud, District Two. Question, do you have, I guess, on the website, when you go on there and have it all pretty much on a PDF file, the breakdown of how that is, the 220?
So it's a single figure. It's the annual amount owed to pay down the debt for this thing. And so unlike our town projects where there's some piece of more broadly-serving public infrastructure that RTM votes to support a bond on, and then it just becomes part of our debt service that the town pays for the town's infrastructure, this one instead was something the town did to facilitate some really desperately needed water and sewer improvements within Mountain Home Park, that Mountain Home, Tri-Park, the owners there, needed the town to be the borrower in order to obtain the funds and have it be the most favorable rates for borrowing. And so we have this unusual arrangement where each year there's an assessment against the district. Tri-Park pays the town, the town pays the creditor, because the town was officially the borrower, even though the benefits were for a particular spot rather than for the whole town. Does that make sense? So there isn't a detailed breakdown?
No, I can understand the accounting app, but there's a breakdown, I guess, in a sense, for interest and all that.
There's a debt service schedule that identifies why the amount is $223.76 this year. Finance generates, the finance director generates that number based on what they see coming as what's going to be owed to the creditor in the next fiscal year for this debt. It's going to last still for a while. It's a long-term borrowing. But each year, it's a pass-through, where it's always right around $220,000, but it varies a little bit. And this year, it's $223.276.47. You'll, I hope, approve it, because otherwise we're in trouble. And then we'll collect that from Tri-Park and make the payments.
Ah, okay, I see. I just wanted to say, I guess, maybe this to see how it was broken. I think I got an idea, so maybe perhaps maybe the next meeting we'll get more clarification, I guess, in a sense, on the aspect of that.
Yeah. We'll take a look at it, see if there's something that we can provide, other than just sort of the paperwork from the creditor of what we owe. I mean, that's how this number is derived. But I may not be fully understanding your question. If you want to see me after or at the office, I'd be happy to try to get to the bottom of it.
Absolutely, absolutely. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Bob Tornalani, District Two. A while. I was trying to remember how long the "a while" is.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry. We'll provide that answer, along with whatever we can do that is responsive to Gary's question, along with the solid waste question that came up earlier. When we push out the additional information, we'll tell you exactly what it is. I don't remember the exact term of the debt.
Thank you for that. Okay, so that is technically our last summary. I want to point everybody to this purple book that you have. And it's just, there's almost no page on here that doesn't have good information from, you know, starting off with summaries of each of the articles, moving towards like the pages 20 and 21, and up through 24, you have the opportunity to read the minutes from last year, which can be super helpful. There's, you know, moving on to Page 25, there's a summary from the select board, from myself, from parts of town government, and then, as Peter referenced, his town manager's report, which starts on Page 27. So there's really just a lot of good information in this book, and if you can dig into that, particularly for anybody who's new or just wants a refresher, read last year's minutes so you can remember, especially when we're talking about reoccurring items. At this time, I would be open to taking any general questions, and I, of course, will lean us far away from any kind of back-and-forth debate on topics. Yes.
Orion Barber, District One. As a hearing impaired person, I just want to give you my thanks for, one, your management of the microphones and the general sound system here. And if lessons, if lessons, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
If tactful lessons can be imparted to the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor reunion meeting people, I would be so grateful. I attended a meeting, I guess it was, was it last night? And it was useless for me to be there, because even speaking into a microphone held like this does not work. So, thank you.
My pleasure. I have always loved a good microphone. It's nothing I've ever shied away from. And thank you to Tim and BCTV. And I've got a question coming down, yellow shirt from the back. It's a long walk to that microphone. I feel that.
Testing one, two. My name is Dan Jeffries. I've lived in District One, out here in West Brattleboro, for the last 25 years. In the last 25 years, we spent $55 million on the high school. We've spent about $23 million on the waste treatment facility, and we've spent a few million on the fire and police stations, all good infrastructure expenditures. And I'm open to being told that there's a better time and place to ask this question. It's kind of seasonal. I'm very curious, and I think Peter has addressed this once before, and there was something in a reformer about this, just in some detail, which was helpful. But I'm really curious, after 25 years, what the plan is for Western Avenue out here in West Brattleboro, in that currently, it is a game of chicken driving down Western Avenue. I am astounded that anybody would ride a bicycle down Western Avenue out here. And I'm just curious, I know it's a big expenditure, I'm just wondering, is there any plan at all? And as I say, we could address this at some other time. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to provide a 30,000-foot perspective on it. Steve Barrett is the fellow who could speak in greater detail, both to the history and then, you know, to what we cope with, what I'm going to give a brief description of. There probably is a better time to have that conversation, but, you know, if you all want to stay, I know Steve has answers that he could offer to you. But it's complicated, and the reason it's complicated is, the old road underneath the asphalt is a concrete road, and so the layers of asphalt that get put down on top of it don't behave in the manner they would if they had been placed on top of a proper road base with different types of stone at different levels that allow it to, you know, expand and contract with the seasons and drain better when there's, you know, water that seeps through. And so instead, what we get is repeated instances of, you know, a significant overlay on top of that historically problematic section of road that doesn't last very long. And we have to encounter the kind of problems that we've had this winter. This winter's been particularly tough, not just on that segment, but all over town, because of the freeze-thaw cycles being more significant than in some winters. But that's the bottom line. That's what a town manager can say about it. Your Public Works Director could talk more specifically about, you know, what options there might be to do something more thorough. But frankly, to rip up all that concrete and build the road properly is, I believe, more money than any of us can believe that the town would tolerate. And so instead, we do the best we can to do a much more frequent repair and resurfacing in that section than in most areas around town.
Well, actually...
Just a quick follow-up. So this is not something that can get bonded and repaired once and for all?
Well, Steve walks up, I'll just say, you could. We could. And if, you know, the community would like us to generate something more like an estimate rather than a descriptive response, then we certainly can do that. I'll leave it there and let Steve take a deeper dive.
Yeah, Steve Barrett, Director of Public Works. It is complicated. One of the things that we need to remember is that the town is responsible for repair of that road, and the state is ultimately responsible for major capital projects. So if anywhere, we should be lobbying the state to push them to get funding to fix the road. It hasn't been done in many years. It's way overdue. And our challenge has been to try to, you know, repair something that's way beyond repair. So the place to lobby, really, is the state and our representatives, and to get funding for this road, which we've been successful a couple of times, and really, that's just been a patch. You know, it was a 3/8 overlay that made everybody feel good for a couple of years, and we're right back where we started. So lobby the state, that's where we can go. Then the bike lanes and everything else can be included in the projects, and that's the way to go.
As an aside, since this...
As an aside, since this happened to come up, I'd be happy to see the Putney Road money go into Western Ave. But anyway, my, I'd like to ask whether the town, is the state pressing the town at all on the sewer line that runs through the west, the Whetstone Creek?
No.
I love the brevity. John Kennedy, District One. I'm looking at the budget summary on Page 112. In an income, you're talking about the sales tax that we much discussed last year. It's last year's town budget. I ask that we work with the elected officials to address the extra $350,000-ish that the state takes out of that sales tax money to see if we can't get our share or a significant portion of that share spent in Brattleboro rather than be a windfall in the black hole they call a state budget.
Right. Yes, you did. It's, it's a, it's a statute. It's not just a operating decision of state government. And so the, the law would have to be changed. Everybody who adopts that provision, who adopts a local option sales tax only gets two-thirds of the revenue and the state takes the other. So, and then that, that money goes, some of it is actually taken by the state as an administrative fee and the balance of it goes into a fund that is used to pay out to, a payment in lieu of taxes to the communities that house state facilities. So Brattleboro does get some of that money, but I, it's arguably not our fair share, I think, based on the fact that there are communities that house, you know, in Muppilier and Berry and Waterbury and other places, you know, many more state facilities than we do.
So we tried, but it's not really an option.
It's not really an option. We'd have to get a broad coalition across the state to want to make that change. And I can tell you that most municipalities would think it would be great. And the legislature hasn't been all that responsive to what most municipalities would think would be great in recent years. To be less sarcastic and more direct, the status of the self-governance initiative is it made good progress last year in the Senate, got voted out of committee and approved by the full Senate, not really entirely intact, but at least it was moving along. And the House Government Operations Committee, despite repeated strong requests from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and those of us here and other municipal officials across the state, has not taken the matter up. And the biennium is about to end and we're going to have to start again.
Thank you.
Hi there, Dr. Tortellani.
Hi there. Bob Tortellani, District Two. Thank you. I, I have quite a concern about pedestrian accidents over the years. In the United States, it's going up dramatically. I think a lot of that has to do with the pedestrians themselves are distracted in their walking and they're not necessarily looking at where they're going. Makes it harder for, for people driving cars, of course, watching out for them. So it's a big, big problem. We've had some tough problems in this town over the last 10 years with pedestrian injuries. I guess the one thing I, I can think of is that the crosswalks, I, I notice that, that many times they're not easily seen and they're, they're in bad shape. And I think that's probably one thing we can do is just try to make the crosswalks very, very kept up as well as we can. I've seen in other communities where the crosswalks are actually different colors from, from the road, like red or blue, and it seems to stand out. Here we have the white things. It's fine, but I, I think that whatever we do, we've got to keep them in good shape. And I guess we all have to be very alert for pedestrians because, you know, they're at high risk and bikers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tortellani. I have seen those in Northampton and I, I think they're good, the multicolored crosswalks. Any more questions pertaining to what was discussed tonight? Gary? And then?
Gary Shroud, District Two. What Steve Barrett was saying, it was a while back, I don't know if you remember when we had did pave the roads from, I think they came from Massachusetts Construction Company. Was it Steve, a while back when they paved the roads? And I don't know how long ago, is that something that we have to do with the state alongside with us to get that happening again?
Do you wish to be interrogated, Steve? Because we don't know the answer up here.
Well, as, as far as the line striping goes, when a road is paved, like when Main Street was done, it was done with a more permanent type of line striping. We do paint the roads twice a year. This body supported increasing our painting budget several years ago. Dr. Tortellani's suggestion to, to paint crosswalks with a different color, that could be considered, but it comes with a cost. But we certainly could consider that and we would welcome funds to do that. But that's what it takes. It takes the funds to do it. But doing it twice a year has helped and, and we also, we paint right before the fall, before the winter months. And then, of course, you know, the winter, the abrasion from the sand and the salt, you know, scrubs that paint off. And we'll be out there here just next month to brighten everything up.
Right. I remember we had gravelled the streets. This is like a while back and I think a team came up when they did Canal Street. But it was a big problem and then everything was like, I didn't know if that's something that we could consider again.
That was part of a state project similar, like if we do the Western Avenue that I talked about, that would all be included in a contract.
So we don't want to fire our state reps and?
Okay. All right. Seeing no further hands and at 9:03 PM, we will adjourn this meeting. Have a great night. We will see you all in a couple of weeks. Please keep your finger to the pulse of anything going on that might change that.